5:30, and I will call our regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us.
(inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's meeting is both in person and online. Our city council members and our staff members are all present inside the chambers, and members of the public may join us by tuning into Channel 16 or 859, or else go to burnsvillemn.gov/meetings and join us on Zoom. You can also call — oh, we don't have that number — but join us on Zoom. So, we now move on to our announcements, and our announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, December 21st at 5:30 p.m., and Tuesday, January 4th at 5:30 p.m. We have a work session that's scheduled for Tuesday, December 14th at 5:30 p.m. All meetings are held in the council chambers. The next item is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on an item that is not on a printed agenda and not in application form that will be coming before us at a future date. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? I believe, Mr. Wool, you wanted to address the council. Please come forward. Is he at the — is this where he can also access his presentation? Okay, Mr. Wool, please give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Keenan Wool. I live at 3413 Barbara Lane, and I've been a citizen of Burnsville for 34 years and in our current residence for nearly 22. Can I proceed?
Pardon me?
Can I proceed with my —
Oh, please, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, please.
All right. So I'm here today with one of my neighbors. Unfortunately, a few of them are on TV with the weather and everything else they're going to be watching, to share some frustrations related to the lack of upkeep in our city. I'll be showing some pictures that I have from our neighborhood, our street, as well as some other kind of offending properties within the city. And really, this has to do with the lack of upkeep in our neighborhoods, the lack of action when we report issues, and the lack of appropriate response to the citizens complaining about these issues. For most of us, our home is our biggest investment, and I'm guessing that everybody's here for a reason to make our city a better place and a more vibrant community. So I come to you today looking for help. Unfortunately, our city, in my opinion, has been failing us in helping citizens that are complaining about issues related to their neighbors kind of not keeping up to some form of a standard, and I plan on sharing my story from about August of 2020 until today. So, I understand that there was some funding voted down for the code enforcement team back in 2019. So as I've spoke with the mayor, I've spoken with Jenny and council members Workman and Keeley, I understand that some neighbors felt kind of picked on, right? There was some citations that were unsolicited, and, you know, some neighbors were feeling upset or kind of picked on based on some of the activity that was going on. But I will say that post-defunding, I kind of witnessed, from what I have experienced, a paralyzed code enforcement team, furious citizens such as myself and others, and near zero accountability or action from our city. So, let me go back to August of 2020. I placed a call to the city. I also emailed pictures of some stuff that I was experiencing at a neighbor's place, and here's one of the pictures. You can see a table that's on its side, tables that aren't — or chairs that aren't even standing upright, garbage in the backyard. Off to the right of the house is where there was a pool. They never replanted grass. There's a truck in the upper left that you can see where the hood's open. It's been worked — it's been working on for a few days, not being taken off the street, I don't believe. And here's the front view. Again, the truck is in the lower right. You can see garbage piled up near the garage, and I believe that these residents were getting ticketed for parking in the street overnight, which they're not supposed to do, so they solutioned that by parking in the yard. So, I submitted the picture in email, and seven days later, I received a response. They were able to get out there on the same day with — and then, you know, they responded to me explaining that there was going to be an inspection, there was going to, you know, they addressed kind of the specific complaints, and then, you know, kind of really how the process works. And, you know, this is really what I've experienced over the years whenever I've called the city about anything, and I was pleased with the response. You know, they would explain things in detail, they would come back, and they would address things, and if there was issues, they would stay on top of them. And then here, we come into the — this summer, this year, on April 15th, I reached out to the city related to some issues. Now, our oldest daughter was graduating from high school. We were going to host a graduation party in the middle of June, so I figured might as well get some calls in and get some things cleaned up, so we have a presentable neighborhood. And so, I reached out, was informed that there was no more kind of — there was no longer a proactive program. We exchanged a couple emails, asked for some additional help. They said they'd open up another case. It was kind of the dialogue I was used to. On June 7th, I followed up. I got a response, and it was being handed off to somebody else I wasn't really familiar with on the team. I promptly left a voicemail that same day on June 7th. Excuse me. The graduation party was held on the middle of June. On the 19th, I followed up and with another call, left a voicemail, had not received a return call yet. On July 22nd, I found the employee's email address on the company website or the city website, and I sent that email asking for help. I did receive a response on that same day, saying, "Hey, thank you. I'll go take a look." Now, it took 43 days after a couple phone calls and an email to get that response. "I'll take a look." On the 29th of July, I followed up asking for updates. On August 1st, I sent another email, really kind of calling out multiple things that, you know, I was getting frustrated with, and I was not seeing any improvement. And those include a trampoline that was just laying in the yard, inflatable toys that were deflated, overgrown patio, a window screen that was sitting below the window, on and on and on. August 2nd, I received a response. I already went to the property, and I did not observe a code violation. There was no addressing each specific point, telling me which was a violation, why it wasn't, none of that. It took 54 days to get no violation, just a very canned response. Here's a picture of kind of just the thread that I had had at the time. So again, my first-time inquiry was in May related to these specific issues, and took until August to find simply I did not observe any code violations. It was 54 days. Now, our summers, we joke here, are three months. Think about how long that is. It's almost the whole summer. I'm sitting on a patio, looking at this mess. So, it was really a pattern I experienced, and my neighbors did as well. We'll take a look. We looked and did not find a violation, and then finally, basically, just frustration from myself. So on August 2nd, I respond. I'm trying to understand, really looking for some responses to help address some of the concerns that I had. I also kind of explained in the past what my experience was, working with some different people in the code enforcement staff, and, you know, would they be willing to come and talk with my neighbors and I because there was a lot of frustration. Again, on August 2nd, received a response. You know, we've responded to nine complaints. They really kind of went through and said, "Hey, we're dealing with COVID. Completely understand that. We're trying to stay out of the courts and completely appreciate that." But I wasn't seeing any citations. I wasn't seeing any proof or suggestions that they were really trying to take care of anything. There was no violations found. So on August 3rd, I received another response. You know, we reviewed the pictures that were taken on Friday with the inspector in that area, did not see any issues. You know, they called out a couple things that they saw that I see highlighted there, but really not much more. And then on the bottom there, you'll see an example that would have been long weeds and grass allowed to grow as long as eight inches. Now, you can see where I have circled in these pictures here that those are clearly longer than eight inches. And, you know, kind of an odd summer. We didn't have a lot of mowing because there was a drought, and so we had random weeds or trees or whatever growing up in this yard, and they weren't being mowed down because there was no mower being run because it didn't need to be necessarily. You can also see the windows or the screen sitting below the window in the house there. So I sent another email, just happened to be walking the dog. Some garbage laying in the street in front of the house, garbage, as you'll see in a moment, is a real issue. On September 2nd, call out the trampoline again that's in the front yard. It's already been a month. Yep, got a response. It's already on our list. Might be able to have a look at it again today. I followed up twice before I got a response. So on September 15th, again, struggling to see significant code violations. I did not see any trees that are three to four feet tall, and we do not have the resources to spend so much time on a property. Keep in mind, nothing's really taken place yet, but yet there's no time to spend on this property, and I'm really dumbfounded at this point, and I'm looking at the attached pictures which are here on the left. Now, when you look at these, you don't see a whole lot, and I can kind of see why the supervisor in this department did not think that there was any violations. But if you look more closely, on the right picture, you can point out some two- to three-foot weeds. On the left picture, there's some leaves on the edge, and those are very particular to me because I get to drive by every day and see this 58-inch weed tree, whatever you want to call it in the yard, that's conveniently really kind of missed in the picture. So again, in the earlier slide, said as long as eight inches without a code violation being called, and I got the answer, no violations. There were over 10 of these weeds that are at least two feet tall, and at one point, I counted 19 that were probably at least a foot tall. This is the view as you would turn the corner onto our street. So there's two ways, obviously, on our street. We don't live in a cul-de-sac, but this is how, you know, this is the impression people get when they pull onto our street. You can see all those trees and weeds. You can see the screen below the window, just kind of a mess. Here's just some additional pictures. You can see that pop-up canopy in the upper left. That started in the backyard. It was being used. It blew over actually to my neighbor, Mr. Johnson's yard. He put it back in theirs. You can now see it crumpled up in the front after the wind got a hold of it. Here you can see the trampoline that we got to stare at for over a month, just in a pile in the yard, but there was no violations being found. There's the screen again below the window, just another view. You can see the garbage is off to the right. I understand completely that there's not a rule anymore to have your garbage is hidden, but we'll get to that in a moment. So on the 25th, we saw some progress. I got home from dropping off my daughter at college, and I was very happy to see the yard mowed. That 58-inch weed was gone. But if you look underneath that tree, there's all kinds of growth under there that's not been cleaned up, I don't think probably will be. There were weeds like thistle bushes that were at least two feet in diameter that I can see off my side yard pictured on the left, and on the right, you can see the hints of some trees or weeds that are growing up on my fence line. And here's some more pictures of them. Now, I had the opportunity, because the city's not doing anything, nor are the neighbors, to go and cut these down by myself and then just throw them in my compost bin. I do not feel that this is my job. This is on their yard. When the yard was cleaned up, when I just showed you those pictures of the mowing, good thing is you can see the window screen is up temporarily again, that right window, but this brush pile is still sitting there today from late September. Now it's kind of covered up in plastic. There was brush left on the curb, which you're not supposed to do. And then this pile in particular that you see next to the garbages has now been relocated to the park that's across the street. I took Mr. Workman and Mr. Keeley on a walk, and I pointed those out when they were over last week. So since presenting to the mayor on the 27th of September, this is what we've been experiencing. It's a lot of garbage. There's actually 11 arrows here pointing to debris that's in the yard. Saturday alone, I picked up two pieces out of my yard. Been picking up garbage for weeks. I know Mr. Johnson has been picking up garbage as well. This is just last weekend. Apparently, one of their dogs got into the garbages. Nobody bothered to pick it up. When they took the garbage down to the street, they still left all this behind, and I get to continue to pick it up out of my yard and as do other neighbors. So back to that quote, "We do not have the resources to spend much time on the property." I know of at least seven neighbors who have called and/or emailed the city numerous times. I have exchanged personally 52 emails with the code enforcement team, and we get to look at our street or this residence 365 days a year. So my neighbors and I, what we have done, we presented to the mayor and Jenny and others on the 27th of September. We presented to Mr. Workman and Keeley on the 29th of November, and I'm appreciative they came over. I think we had, what, about nine people over that day? So you can see, it matters to our neighbors. This is not a small crowd. And we're here today with all of you. We're looking for action. I believe that the noise that we have made related to the lack of action on this house and just the treatment of our street warrants help from the city council and from the city. What is happening is not acceptable. What we're looking for is to find out how we can help the code enforcement team achieve our sustainable and actionable results. We're looking for a commitment from the code enforcement team on responding to complaints. We want our specific concerns addressed. You know, as I said, if I say four things that I see, I would like four things addressed. You know, that is a violation. That's not, we're going to take care of it, what have you, instead of no violations found. I do not feel like they have the time allocated or the staffing allocated to be able to support that today. I would also like to see those, you know, reported violations or assumed violations kind of handled in a timely fashion instead of me chasing them down. I'm looking for — we are looking for champions to help make our city a better place. We want a vibrant city where people want to live. We want pride in our homes and our city, and we want to maintain resale value in our homes. What's in place today is not working for us. Underfunding this team is moving — and moving away from the proactive system is failing us, and it's infuriating residents like myself. It's putting property owners at risk and impacting the long-term viability and vibrancy of our city. Here's some additional pictures that the city shared with me by way of request of other homes that are facing the same challenges. So, my proposal, my suggestions to the council and the city is for the city to create a definition of success. What can the code enforcement team do? What can we expect of our citizens? And, you know, if it's considered to be predatory, to be, you know, issuing citations and stuff like that that are unsolicited, fine, take that out. Are there other ways to handle things? Absolutely. I think that we can enable our city's ability to respond to requests like mine. I think that if it's not already in place, we can create one or modify it, but there should be a code enforcement SLA service level agreement. I think that proactive follow-up for frequent offenders should be a part of this program. If I'm calling a couple times and it's a reoccurring deal, that warrants a visit. That warrants some follow-up. Is this resident on track? Are they continuing to do what's expected to them by way of code? And then, you know, address those specific concerns. Instead of no violations found, yep, that's not acceptable. This is okay by code, just line by line. I think that's a reasonable approach. I think a data-driven approach would also be helpful. This is a poor representation of a heat map that I have on the right, but if we measured the noise by way of phone calls and emails, I'm thinking that my street would be pretty damn red, and, you know, I think that that warrants action. And I also think that net promoter scores or like customer satisfaction scores could be helpful because it could weigh the health of, you know, how the code enforcement team and how the city is responding to its citizens. So I'm asking you, let's find a way to retain and draw homeowners to Burnsville and not steer them away. Because I'll tell you this, if my house that I live in now was for sale and I was with a realtor and I was coming around the corner and saw that home, I'd tell that realtor to keep driving. I would not stop at that house. So I want to thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and I'm hoping that we can find some champions. I know that the mayor and council members Workman and Keeley have expressed interest in helping us with this, and I'm looking for some help. So thank you.
Mr. Wool, thank you so much for your courage to come before us this evening and to tell your story. And yes, we want to have a vibrant city, and a vibrant city means a vibrant neighborhood. And yes, we, as your elected officials, need to respect and hear the voices of our community members like you and your neighbors and others who have sent us numerous emails complaining about properties that are not being taken care of. And yes, you are correct. Our homes are mostly the largest investment in our portfolios, and we need to make sure as a city that we make sure that our property values continue to improve and not decrease in value. You belong here. I don't want to see you or your neighbors or any of our other residents to feel like because you're not heard that you need to leave the city because you are not valued. You are valued, you and your neighbors and others, because we say that you belong here and everyone is welcome. And we do have rules so that we can all live in harmony together and also help one another. And as elected officials, you, as our citizens, have given us the stewardship to make sure that this city is vibrant and that we lead boldly and everyone is welcome. And that's what we said our vision is for this city. I am sorry that it has taken you months and days to get action. That's our fault. It's not our staff. They're just doing their work.
Yeah, my goal is not to pick on individuals here. It is to look for a solution to a problem.
Yes. And so, City Manager Lee, I believe that this item is on our work session next week? Is it on our work session?
It is, Madam Mayor.
So I hope that you and your neighbors will show up as well because we will discuss this, because it is important, because you're not the only one who has written to us or called and complained about what's going on in our neighborhoods. I really do not like what I'm seeing and hearing from our residents. That's not who we are. We care about all of you, and we care about the value of your property and the value of the city, and we need to ensure that it is vibrant. And so we failed you. Yes, you are correct. What we have done has failed you, and we will do better.
I appreciate that. As I shared with you previously, you know, driving through to see a family member in Shakopee, similarly aged neighborhood, about 50 years old, looks a lot nicer than ours for homes like this that I showed pictures of. There's not — I'm not seeing those there.
Yeah. So please let your neighbors know that we are addressing this issue. It's on our agenda for the work session. We will, and I would like for you to be present. And we will let the other residents who have written to us and sent pictures, as you have seen some of the pictures throughout the community, where people are frustrated.
Yep.
They're frustrated, and we've failed them. So we will do better. Forgive us.
I appreciate this, and, you know, I understand from the other council members that, you know, there are some houses that are in much more dire than what I had shown pictures of. Again, I would say that is our local frustration and the calls. If we use some sort of a heat map as a logic for getting some attention, I'm pretty confident we would weigh pretty well in that for prioritization. So thank you.
And thank you because some of your solutions, a dashboard, will help us all to keep our eye on things together and keep our city vibrant. Thank you so much for your courage for coming in this evening.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one, I will go on to the next item on the agenda, and this is for emergency items only. City Manager Lee, are there any additions to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Members of the council? Okay. We will then move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of items that is considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on a consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item on the consent agenda to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? City Manager Lee?
No, Madam Mayor.
Members of the council?
Yes, I would like item 4E removed from the consent agenda.
Okay. May I have a motion for the balance, please?
So moved.
Councilmember Gustafson makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Workman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Councilmember Schultz, this item 4E is to approve the registration for a national settlement for the prescription opioid litigation. Would you like to speak to it, or would you like some background from our attorney? Would you like to speak to it or would you like some background from our attorney?
Background first, please.
Thank you. Attorney Jemnic, would you speak to this item, please?
Mayor and council, as you probably know, we've provided previous information regarding litigation that has been taken against the manufacturers of opioid medication nationally. They had reached a national proposed settlement. That settlement would foreclose future actions by individual governmental units against the manufacturers. That settlement needs to be approved by active participants and indirect beneficiaries as part of the class action or joint lawsuit. This resolution would do that and would entitle the city then to share in the distribution of the settlement proceeds, which I believe are approximately $300 million. Minnesota share was the topic of a discussion of a subsequent, a additional allocation, distribution formula. That part of the settlement has not yet been completely finalized. More information on that will be provided later this week. But this is basically to be approved if we're going to receive any funds by the end of December.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
So the, the questions and concerns that I have on approving this fall in line with the lawsuits and the language of the lawsuits that were taken on the opioids. I don't have a problem with the sections of the lawsuit which went after some of the more aggressive practices of the manufacturers that they were either exaggerating or misrepresenting or heavy-handed in their encouragement. What I do have issue with is by signing on to this, we are giving tacit approval to the line in the lawsuits which stated and pushed heavily on the fact that, not a fact, pushed heavily on the idea that there is no pain-relieving medicinal value to opioids. And I have a big concern on taking this money, which shows approval for that line of thought. Opioids do help people with pain management. And they're one tool that doctors do use, although they're increasingly restricted from using, to manage pain for patients both in the short term and the long term. The addiction rates that we're seeing and the overdose rates are not from prescription medications. They're not from prescription opioids. What they're from is from street fentanyl. But they lop them all together. We do see that people receive pain relief from opioids. And they should be properly managed between the patient and their doctor. I do know that this type of litigation has pushed doctors to be extremely restrictive in prescribing pain medication for pain management to where people are refusing to get needed surgeries because they know there's a long-term difficult road to recovery. And even in the very short term, they're being given Tylenol for something as large as two hip replacements, fairly extensive back surgery. We are currently seeing cancer patients in this country who have to make a decision if they want their pain managed or if they want to continue cancer treatment, but they're not allowed to do both. Because they can go into end-of-life care and have their pain managed, or they can continue pain treatment. And increasingly, they're choosing end-of-life care prematurely. So I do have concerns. I realize it's great when you get, like, a wonderful little gift of money. Like, governments are always hunting for, hunting for change in the cushions, right? And residents are probably looking at this and saying, we could spend that on something or we could do something good with it. But when I look at this and I look at the fact that, that we would be saying we agree with both of those items, not just one of them, that gets into blood money for me. And I, I can't in good conscience vote to put our city on that register. And I realize that we might be one of the very few cities that are not like right up at that trough, ready to, ready to eat the slop. But that's, that's what it is. And, and this has been, this has been really harmful. And I don't just know this in an abstract way. During my years of, of being treated for cancer, I experienced pain that I, I can't even, I can't even describe the level of pain. I ripped my own hair out. And most of the time, they were able to properly manage my pain and I was able to make it through and continue treatment. When I think back on that and I think if I had been forced to go through it without properly managed treatment, I wouldn't be here because I would have opted not to. I couldn't have stood it. So I think the pendulum has swung too far. And I can't in good conscience accept this type of money. So I open this up for discussion.
Before I get there, Mr. Jemnic, can you speak to, Councilmember Schultz says that it's not the opioids that have killed people or have put them on the track to addiction, but it's fentanyl. Can you speak a little bit more to that? I, I understand her thoughts about managed pain care. But the issue of opioids, prescribed opioids versus fentanyl?
Mayor and council, part, part of the settlement is in fact predicated on the abuse of prescription drugs, both in the prescribing and use monitoring and, and that side of it, as well as the illegal manufacture and use of synthetic, like, fentanyl. So, well, I don't disagree, there is the other side of it and that is part of it. And one of the dangers or one of the difficulties, as you know, from years, years of service with legislation and the rest is when you're one part of a large national thousand entities and dealing with multiple parties, there's always going to be parts of legislation, litigation and other types of joint efforts that we don't fully agree with. And so you're constantly weighing and balancing whether on, in total, you can support something even though you have concerns or disagreements with aspects or parts of the, either the initial litigation or the settlement in use. And obviously, even on the use of the settlement proceeds, there's going to be disagreement on what the appropriate expenditures at the state and local level is going to be. Whether it's equipment for emergency first responders or it's going to be addiction and cessation treatment programs, whether they're going to be one-time expenditures or try to be integrated in long-term programs and stuff. So there's going to be a lot of those issues involved throughout any of these multiple-party types of, of activities. And that is part of the policy discussion for the council of, in total, are you comfortable proceeding? Or, as Councilmember Schultz indicated, you'd rather stay away from it, and that certainly is a viable option.
Yeah, and as you articulated, that there are many factors. The idea of synthetic pain medication is all part of that. And I have seen friends' children misuse prescribed opioid and have taken their lives. And it's because of the over-prescribed, over-prescribed of pain medication. I know when, because I'm a two-time cancer survivor, I was prescribed pain meds. I chose not to take it. I, I didn't want to go down that track. So, yes, I used Advil and other methods of, to manage my pain. But cancer is different for everybody. Cancer that Councilmember Schultz went through is different from the cancer that I went through or anybody else. But I think we look at this from a holistic point of view. And for me, we're opting in. And as more information comes back, you either opt out or we say, yes, we can proceed with this. But there, there's a lot more, I believe, to, to this particular item than just waiting and going to the trough for money. It's also about the health of the people who have been, who have suffered under prescription drugs. So, any other comments? Councilmember Keely?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I've read enough to know where Councilmember Schultz is coming from with her comments. I was not aware of the extraordinary pain that, that she had to bear in her cancer journey. I know that it is pretty bad. I have lost a friend, a best friend from 23, of 23 years to the same cancer. And, you know, this is a very unusual process for us to go through. We don't get something like this put in front of us very often. In fact, I'm not sure.
Tobacco was the last one.
Tobacco, many, back in the 90s. But this is the first time this has come that I'm aware of during my tenure here. And it's a little awkward because there isn't really a lot of information there. But Councilmember Schultz has done her homework and brought forth some facts that I was not aware of related to the line about opioids or pain, opioids don't provide any pain relief. I think that's an absurd statement to be in that lawsuit. But legal settlements have all kinds of things involved in them that we don't understand unless we're part of that negotiation or, or part of the law process. So I, I'm, I'm torn. I think, my first question is, is this the only stop? Is there a, an opportunity in this process for when this is going to play out? That this council will have another opportunity to talk about, once we have more information, I suppose, understanding what this is in more detail? Cause it seems like a lot in a single-page or a two-page background, pageant background. As far as the, the magnitude of the decision, there's a lot more than that.
Mr. Jemnic?
Uh, Mayor and council, the short answer is yes. The longer, the longer response is, this will be a two-step process. This tonight is the first step, which needs to be done by the end of the year to approve participating in the settlement. The second part will be the allocation through the state between the state of Minnesota, the county governments and city governments of Minnesota's allocated share. And we have some preliminary information regarding that announced by the state earlier this week. And more information will be made available later this week. That allocation also has to be approved by resolution of the council. And that will be brought back to the council when we have firmer numbers. So tonight, you could act on this or you could continue it until your next December meeting. And at that one, we would have a revised resolution presented with additional information on both the registration for the settlement itself, which is before you tonight, as well as to approve the allocation. And at that point, you would know what's on the table, what the purposes for that appropriation would be. And you'd have a little bit more context of what it means for you to make your decision. And we could do that at the next council meeting.
And that will still allow us to be, to be in compliance for the end of December? Okay. Uh, Councilmember Workman?
Thank you. And I just have a, a follow-up question for Joel. In addition to endorsing the receiving or declining of the funds, would it also be an endorsement of, you know, the actions that would be taken kind of congruent with this lawsuit? As I look at the Attorney General's website, there's some information here about things that the court would be ordering, one of them being establishing a centralized, independent clearinghouse to provide the state regulators with aggregated data and analytics about where drugs are going and how often, so on and so forth. And it, you know, additional restrictions on local pharmacies for shipping and reporting this medicine. Would we be endorsing Keith Ellison's, you know, suggestions in, with this vote?
You'd be participating in it, Mayor and council, but you wouldn't necessarily be specifically endorsing any more than you'd be endorsing what any of the other recipients are going to spend the money on. You'd be participating in the overall distribution, but you don't have a, an approval or involvement in what other states, local instrumentalities or other cities in Minnesota or in other states decide to spend the money on. You know, that's up to them to decide what their share is. They're going to be participating in receiving that regardless of what Burnsville does. Your decision would be, do you want to participate, receive the funds? And do you think there's validity to receiving them? Or would you want to reject them for policy reasons as enunciated? I mean, that's really the decision for you to make. And I think it's probably better to have the full context in front of you of what, what you'd be facing. And I don't, you know, as far as what you can spend it on, whether you want that money or not for those reasons, would be a little bit more concretely presented to you at the next meeting.
Yeah. So, members of the council, I, I would say that we continue this item till the 21st and get more information. We can still act and be in compliance with opting in.
Move to continue.
Yeah. I will second that.
Okay. Did you want to speak, Councilmember Schultz?
No, no, I, I was actually going to motion that we wait. I do think this is an important decision and we, we do need the information to make the decision. Also realize, not everyone will feel the way that I feel about this issue. And, and I understand that. I think we're all trying to do the right thing. But man is it hard when you don't even have the information. So, I would like you guys to have that information.
So, there is a motion and a second. And Councilmember Schultz, my husband had the same cancer you had. The best thing is that you survived, he didn't.
I know.
So he died 10 years ago. Same cancer, and I had to be his pain meds manager. That was also monitored by the hospice nurses who came. So I had to make sure how much morphine or any other pain meds that I had to administer for him. So I understand all of that, not only for myself, but for also being a caretaker to someone going through that. So there is a motion on the floor to continue this till the 21st. And there is a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you. All right. We now move on to the regular agenda. And the first item on the regular agenda is a sketch plan review, review for Chapultepec Drive-Thru Restaurant within the parking lot southwest of Cub Foods at 300 Travelers Trio East. And presenting this evening is Deb Garros, our city planner. Ms. Garros, good evening and welcome.
Thank you, councilmembers.
I actually got it. I got it. Yay, woo-hoo, I got it.
That was a good icebreaker, wasn't it?
You never know what's gonna happen when I'm up there. Thank you, councilmembers. We do have the sketch plan to review and, uh, we're really, uh, requesting the council to provide some feedback to the applicant, uh, and to staff as to what your thoughts are regarding their, um, best plan. The idea is, uh, there is a proposal to consider a Chipotle restaurant. Uh, this is somewhat of a new prototype that, uh, Chipotle is looking at. The site is indicated in the orange circled area. Uh, it's just south of Dicky's Barbecue Pit. Actually, uh, the site is, uh, between two different lots. And the property to the north is the gallery on Nicollet Apartments and Retail, which is currently under construction. As far as the project itself, um, we are reviewing it in terms of a couple of things. There is a 2004 planned unit development approval for all of the Nicollet Plaza, uh, development and things that have occurred there. And then there's also, the site is in the city's TOD, Transit Oriented Development District. Uh, and for that TOD district, it was adopted by the city last year. Uh, it's built upon the old Heart of the City ordinance, uh, and design guidelines. So, when we're looking at this, I'll try to explain, uh, quickly for you, you know, kind of the difference between the PUD and the regulating plan. Something I want to call your attention to is that the private driveway, uh, that, uh, provides access to Nicollet Avenue, uh, from the site, uh, and back over to Traveler's Trail, that's listed in the regulating plan as future street type A. Not necessarily a public street, uh, but it is a street that's designated, uh, and I believe it was designated in the HLC, Old HLC, um, ordinance as well. And what this regulating plan does is based on the street and the type of street, there is different information and different criteria or performance standards for the types of buildings, uh, kind of desired. Also landscaping, architectural styles, types of building, et cetera. The other thing I want to draw your attention to is on Burnsville Parkway. Uh, that is the type C. And the way that the regulating plan works is for drive-throughs. They are only allowed on the red, um, street type C as part of this regulating plan. So, that's where, um, you can do this based on the plan with a, a conditional use permit. Otherwise, the other areas, um, not intended to have drive-through type services. As far as the site plan itself, uh, there is one building about 2,300 square feet. The building will be a single-story, a building, uh, height, uh, just over nineteen feet. And they are looking at, um, providing a drive-through, but it's not a standard drive-through. They call it the Chipotle. And what that is, is, um, people do not actually pay at the site or order at the site. They order online, pay online. And this is where they can come in their cars and pick up, um, their, their orders. So, that's different. They don't have the same, like, stacking time and time waiting for orders and to get their food prepared, uh, as a standard, uh, type fast food restaurant. So, they have shown, um, that they can provide, um, a stacking lane with six spaces. And that's something that the ordinance calls for. Basically, this area, um, is part of, as I said, the overall PUD. There was not, uh, anything contemplated when the PUD was approved in 2004 for a building in this location. So, they would need to come in and amend the planned unit development in order to be able to do this. They are looking at a patio, which would be on the south. And that would be adjacent to this future type A road, if you will. And that's something that is, uh, consistent with what the ordinance, uh, is looking for. Dining is a permitted use, uh, in this part of, uh, TOD. The drive-through is, is really the, uh, the issue here, uh, that we need to deal with in terms of the, uh, the ordinance. The parking, uh, in this general vicinity, uh, there are currently thirty-nine parking stalls. Um, the proposal for parking would end up with eighteen stalls. Uh, so it would be less, a loss of about twenty-one stalls overall. Uh, green space, there would be a minor, uh, change in green space, about six percent less than what the current, what's currently out there today. There is also a trash enclosure that's proposed, uh, to the northwest across, uh, from the site. In terms of the, uh, exterior materials, this is kind of the standard that they have. However, uh, they are willing to work with communities in modifying things to, uh, more fit, you know, uh, a certain community. With the prototype, really, it's primarily EPAS, um, type siding. There is some metal on the bump out that they call, which is where the order pickup window is. Uh, and then, uh, there's also some, um, areas of, of metal that are more decorative. And then storefront windows that you see primarily along the front. And this also shows the patio, uh, having a general outdoor seating area or patio. On the top, uh, the area, if you can see it, uh, kind of in red, this is the other area that is a metal type, uh, application, uh, more decorative metal. But otherwise, primarily EPAS and glass and then, um, the metal accent. In terms of the planned unit development, I tried to get you the, um, what we had on file, which are color copiers from 2004. Aren't that great, apparently? Uh, because they don't show you a lot. So, what I did is just, uh, took information off of Google. And basically, for the, um, the retail space and Cub, they looked at, um, three different types of brick, colors of brick, if you will. Um, on the very base, there's some decorative block. Uh, and then they allowed EPAS. The EPAS material is primarily, um, accent and areas, uh, behind where the signs are located. So, this shows you both the, um, the Cub Foods and then this other part of the site. Overall, the, um, average height of the retail part, uh, not Cub Foods, but the other, uh, smaller retail, uh, areas averages twenty-five feet. Uh, but then Cub Foods was taller than that. And you can see just to the west of Cub Foods where they did kind of that second story with those added windows. Uh, and that's kind of the design, if you will, for the planned unit development. Uh, in addition, there are the two, um, mixed-use buildings to the south. Uh, this is just showing one. Again, very similar, um, three different colors of brick, um, some different EPAS and, um, uh, some accessory, uh, materials as well. So, this just gives you kind of an overall feel for the planned unit development. In terms of the site, as I said, the property to the south is currently being developed, uh, and built with the apartment building and then retail on the part of the first floor. The Chipotle site will be well-served by sidewalks. Once, uh, the apartments to the south are constructed, the dotted red lines are future sidewalk that will be installed. So, they will be coming, um, next year, um, if they haven't already been installed. Uh, so there is a good service in terms of pedestrian access to the site. The city engineer does have some issues related to the building location and just the general area to that southwest, uh, because there are very large, uh, utility easements and utilities that are, uh, in that area. And they are indicating that, uh, if the applicant would want to relocate those or move those, it would be up to them to work, uh, on that. And then that would be their cost as well. Uh, there's also drainage and utility easements, which would need to be vacated or looked at and then reestablished, uh, depending on what happens with this. They would like to see at the time of development, uh, some more information on the drive-through lane operations, kind of what has occurred in other areas where they've done this. A parking evaluation, we would take a look at the entire development, um, the entire PUD and all of the uses for, uh, parking calculation. And that may change because the city, we did update our parking standards, uh, here a year or two ago. So, it, it may be a little less, uh, but we would need the information nonetheless as part of an application. And then just wanted to note that the, um, street out to the west to Nicollet is designated in the PUD as an exit only for Cub Food trucks. So, there's not an entrance into the site from the west, uh, but there is an exit. And this, uh, graphic shows you where the utilities are in relationship to, uh, where the building is proposed. And we've got existing sanitary sewer shown in green. Also, um, the pink, uh, the easements are the blue dotted lines. So, that gives you an idea where they are located. Uh, and then we've got sanitary sewer and water main as well. And this is more of an overall site view. And the only reason I wanted to bring this up is that if they were to, uh, relocate the site further to the east, there are areas that are not so encumbered by utilities within that PUD. In terms of, uh, trying to help council with the different standards as far as the transit-oriented development, uh, the PUD standards and then the project itself, um, I really divided this out. This is the same information that was provided in the report in eight pages. I just tried to shorten it here, uh, to give you a little bit idea where we're at in terms of the concept plan. So, it would be a fast food type restaurant. A PUD amendment would be needed, uh, in order to allow, uh, that use because that use was not anticipated at time of 2004 PUD. Uh, the drive-through we talked about is not typically permitted on, uh, street types A. So, that's, uh, something, a deviation that council would need to consider. In terms of the facade standards, primarily, um, within both the TOD and the PUD, they're really looking at more brick, uh, as being one of the basic materials, brick, glass, and then some EPAS as an accent. Uh, so, uh, we've got, uh, basically, the building overall, um, really should look at probably providing more in terms of brick, uh, if you will, as opposed to, uh, and then lessening the amount of EPAS, uh, and metal, just in terms of overall percentages. For the parking, we talked about, uh, the development, uh, that there is eighteen within the plan. So, um, that is reduced by about twenty-one spaces. Uh, building height is shorter than the thirty-foot minimum. And again, the whole TOD regulating plan is looking at getting larger buildings primarily. This is a smaller building. So, that's why there's, you know, some, uh, trying to reach those standards. Uh, it is a little bit different. For the building type, um, the commercial office-type building, um, is not a type that would be allowed in this, on this street type. So, again, uh, there would be some type of a, uh, deviation that would be needed. The drive-through lanes, uh, on the west, again, don't meet the standards. What the, um, drive-throughs in other parts of the PUD, uh, and HLC, when they had drive-throughs or areas, uh, mechanical equipment, trash enclosures, those types of things, they tried to locate them either within the building, um, or to be, uh, screened, if you will, from public view by the building. So, perhaps they could look at, uh, moving some of these things, uh, to the other side or, uh, switching the, the building floor plan. Uh, they would need to include a bypass lane. That's a new standard. Building frontage, as I said, is a little bit less. But again, it's because this is a much smaller building than, uh, what the TOD was trying to get at. They would need to provide some bike parking, um, that just, or at a sketch plan, so that level of detail wasn't provided. Trash location, again, like to see that relocated, either, uh, better screened or behind the building when you're looking in terms of Nicollet Avenue or the public streets. Outdoor patio may meet the placemaking element, depending on how they set that up and how it's designed. One of the things that, uh, could be considered is for pedestrian, uh, is possibly adding a link to the west to Nicollet, uh, as an access that could be a PUD benefit. If council wants to consider, otherwise, pretty much all of the other pedestrian ways are in place. Uh, let's see here. They are close to meeting minimum green space. Um, the landscaping, we would need to take a look at that. And the other item that's changed is that because they're within a thousand feet of residential, that, uh, they would need to provide some odor-reducing equipment, uh, mechanical equipment, uh, just to avoid odor to the residents. So, with that, uh, that's basically the site plan. And the elements, uh, council guidance requested are, uh, from your perspective, are there any issues or concerns that you have with the sketch plan? Is the drive-through acceptable? Are there any site or building features, uh, that should be considered? And then, uh, other considerations that you believe should be addressed by a future PUD application? Uh, and then in addition to this, just wanted to note for the record, uh, that we did receive a letter today from Chase Real Estate, and that has been provided to council members. And we do have Chris Mo is here, uh, this evening and can address council on, uh, these things. And I do believe that we also have, um, Joe McKellin from Chase here as well.
Very good. Now, give me the name of the person that is representing, uh, HJ.
Chris Mo.
M-O.
M-O-E.
M-O-E?
Yep.
Okay. Councilmember Workman. Okay, somebody is messing with my...
Only can ask questions but me.
Yeah. So, somebody is. If Jay could just, because I think you, you were first in queue. And I, not, and then you're next in queue. That's, but I, I've lost my... I think they're...
We can do it this way, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, we can kick it old school.
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, okay.
Bang on your mic.
Yes. So, Councilmember Workman, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Deb.
I can't, I can't get this to work.
Wonderful presentation, as always. I just have a couple big-picture questions related to this application. And Deb, I don't know if you need to specifically answer them or someone else. But, um, when this, um, Chase building got, was held up in court for several years, it was over parking. And now here we are eliminating additional parking stalls. So, I'm curious what changed, why the lack of parking was enough to hold up a significant project for several years, um, but now is not of much concern. I really like the idea of additional food and options in the area. But there's some inconsistencies there that I need to reconcile. After reading Mr. McKellin's letter, um, and finding out that there's really a, a pretty bad relationship here between HJ and Chase, specifically HJ towing, uh, construction workers' vehicles, threatening to tow future residents' vehicles. I think there's some mending offenses that we have to do, at least for me personally, before I'm willing to look at this specific plan any further than we already have. So, um, right now, I love the idea, but I'm not really prepared to say yes to this tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Gustafson.
I, I agree. I, I do like the idea of a Chipotle in the neighborhood. I think it'd be good for the heart of the city. But my concerns go mainly to designing this building over our infrastructure. And how does that affect, uh, well, how does it affect the gallery? Should we have to dig up that infrastructure or they have to dig it up and, and move it? And how does it affect the rest of the mall if that has to happen? Uh, the other one is I don't, I don't like, particularly like directing traffic to exit out onto Nicollet Avenue. We're very close to that light. I mean, there was a reason that we made that a, a delivery area only because we didn't want to have car traffic going on and off a major thoroughfare like Nicollet Avenue. And so, that, that's, that concerns me. And the other, other thing, quite frankly, that really concerns me is this Chipotle, um, building is really put right directly in front of this apartment building, which takes away a lot of parking down there. And if, correct me if I'm wrong, but is that not a shared, shared parking area? And that is, are not a PUD so that they can share parking? And that's, that's how the whole heart of the city is designed, correct? And so, this, this kind of gets put in a position where anybody that goes to visit, anyone that, that should live in the, the gallery, are not gonna be able to park in front of that building if there's no, nothing on the inside for them to get to. And I, that concerns me to take that parking away from... And I, that concerns me to take that parking away from them as well. I, I agree with what you stated earlier to maybe move it a little further east into the middle of the parking lot if they're going to do something over there. As far as, as far as some sort of pickup window, I, I really don't have a big problem with that. We have a bank over there that's doing it now. And quite frankly, with the distancing that a lot of people want to do, a low touch type business these days, ordering food from a restaurant and driving up to a window and picking it up, I think you find a whole lot of people to be very much in favor of doing something like that. And, and I get having a drive through on a street as opposed to having a drive through in, in public property in the middle of that public property, so, or private property, I should say. Those are my, those are my, my largest concerns on this whole thing.
Council member Keely.
I came out of air. The letter from Mr. McKellin and Chase brought forth numerous concerns that I think all have to be vetted in this process. There's, there's, as council member Workman pointed out, there's a dramatic amount of inconsistencies from their position when the gallery was attempted to be built and now what they're providing today. So it's kind of like, well, highly questionable, number one. Number two, when you looked at that utility plan and the fact that if it was moved to the east, you know, X feet, and it would clear virtually all utility problems, and you see how they positioned it right smack in front of the apartment complex.
Yeah.
And considering all of the history, I don't, I take offense to the location of this. I think it's, it was a, it was a move that apparently there's a lot of money to spend on, on lawsuits and moving utility lines when it could have gone over to the east with minimal disruption and probably would have been a better flow. And over there, I would, I would have been more open minded to a drive through where it's positioned. I would not, under any circumstances, support a drive through because they've, they've crammed it into a corner where that is a, that is a heavily, you know, walking traffic area. It's going to be even heavier when the gallery is completed. And having cars queuing up and pulling in and out that are moving through or cycling through a drive through pickup is highly questionable for pedestrian safety. Number two, the movement nationally, there, there, this is a concept that is discussed at the, you know, nationally by a lot of restaurants as a result of the pandemic. But what is really taking a hold and what is proven, this is not yet, is pull up to the curb and have someone bring it out to your car or go in and pick it up off a shelf, which is going on at the Chipotle on Cliff, Cliff right now and many other restaurants. And in fact, I'll cite an article just a few weeks ago, the Kentucky Fried Chicken chain is going to institute a drive up and pick up off the shelf in their entire nationwide or worldwide chain. So the momentum, the popularity, the existing proven model is in pull up, someone will bring it out to you, or you just go in, you grab it off the shelf and you leave. So there really isn't any necessity that I can see for the drive through pickup. I understand they want to test it, but that's, that's, this is the really bad place to test an unproven concept. I think that's just an unnecessary feature for this particular location. Might be a little more open minded if it were moving away from that congested area, but I don't see it fitting in this particular spot. Overall, thrilled that Chipotle is wanting to come into a heart of the city. Love the concept. It's one of the hottest food chains in the country, along with Chick-fil-A and, and Kane's Fried Chicken in this area. And they, they do a great business. They'll, they'll bring enormous amount of, of traffic to the center where people will probably shop some of the other stores as well. So it's a good co-tenant to help the, the center. And certainly the residents of the gallery and the condo and even myself on the other side of the parking lot would, would walk over and, and patronize it. But I really think the location is highly questionable. And certainly the drive through, I can't support. Thank you.
Okay. Mine isn't working. So council member Schultz, did you press your button because it doesn't show up? It is blank here. So council member Schultz.
You know, I really don't have a problem with the, with the drive through or the concept or, you know, anything like that. Like that, that really doesn't, that really doesn't bother me. But when, when you're not a good neighbor and then you need your neighbors to be a good neighbor back to you, that's, that's not always going to work out well for you. That location looks like a spite building. So maybe work with your neighbors a little better. There could absolutely be some really good solutions that I think would be easily doable and, and everyone would be happy. So that, that would be my suggestion.
Be nice.
Yeah.
Okay.
Will Wheaton rule.
So what I want to also add to the conversation is this, is that the location, I agree with everyone that bringing Chipotle as another option to the heart of the city is a welcome one. The location of where this is being designed, I don't think is the appropriate location because of all of the utilities. Moving it to the east where there aren't any utilities underground would be even inexpensive for the developer to put a building on top and not having to carry the burden of the cost of moving all of that utility. And for me, you know, moving that utility is going to have impact to the gallery, and I don't want that. We've gone through too much for the gallery to be challenged with more disruption. Also, as council member Workman talked about, is the parking. This is a shared parking development. And yet we went to court on parking. And so you're going to take away parking. And we know that the behavior of HJ was to tow the contractors and the workers automobiles that were in that shared parking environment. So I don't believe that there would be a good neighbor position unless there's a way that we can design the PUD around that. But I just don't think this is the right place. I agree with council member Keely about the drive through. Cub has designated parking for people since the pandemic, can order online, pay online, and park, let the attendants know that they're out there and their items are brought out to them. I know this because I live in the area. The other is that during the pandemic, all of our restaurants, when we were shut down and went to curbside pickup, all had designated, well, they didn't have to have designated parking because you can just order, pay online, come in and pick up. And I know that the med crews had all of their orders already. So when you order, you can come and just pick up your order, your name would be there. Jensen's did the same thing, now saying, these are all restaurants that I patronized during the pandemic. Saigon and also when you go to India Palace and some of the other restaurants during that time. So you don't need a designated drive through for all of that because everybody is doing that. Even Chick-fil-A, even with all of the cars going through, they even had an option where you can just drive up, go and pick up your, your order and your name would be there and you paid online. So I don't think that's, I don't think that's necessary to have. Because my guess is this, it might be right now, it's, you know, it's a drive through and pick up your order. It's going to transition to be a drive through where you order on the way out. But I agree with my colleagues that I'm not ready to, to say this is, well, I know this isn't, this isn't the position for this Chipotle business. To the east, yes, let's take a look. But the other part is taking away all of that parking. And then we probably will have issues with the tenants of the gallery, their patrons, and so forth if they get towed. I don't want that. I don't want to see that happen. We in Burnsville and, Mr. Mo, maybe you can let Mr. Carabao know that in Burnsville, we work together, we collaborate, and we work together because we're a welcoming community and we want to work well with each, with one another. We also respect that this is a community that helps one another to be successful and to thrive. What HJ has done is not that. So I think it comes to us in the future, depending, because I'm not hearing anybody thinking that this is something that we should be doing. So Mr. Mo, do you have any comments to make?
Good evening. Chris Mo with HJ Development. I live at 2425 Thoroughbred Lane in Orno. Our intent here today was really to get the feedback that you've given us before taking a project any further, understand what the road box might be to getting something approved. And I think you've given us some very honest opinions so far. And we'll, you know, we'll take those for what they are and decide what we do moving forward. Just some of the kind of context of how this came to as we were approached by Chipotle. They're a business partner of ours that we're building a number of stores for throughout the Twin Cities metro right now. So they approached us and said, hey, what do you think about doing this here? We've got projects in Apple Valley and Andover that are currently under construction with them. And so they really came up with the site plan. They're not aware of all the history necessarily that's here with this site. And so I said, you know, we'll, we'll go talk with them. We'll see what happens, see what they think, get their feedback, go back and let you know what they think and decide where to go from there. So as far as, you know, coming up with a plan that would address some of your concerns, I think we could take some actions to try and do that, move the building over to the east, change some of the architectural elements. As far as doing something without a drive through, they just won't do it. So Chipotle nationally is not doing anything, or at least in our market, without a pickup window, a Chipotle lane. So they don't refer to it as a drive through. And that is their growth model moving forward that we're executing on and other projects around the town. So if you do see one elsewhere in Burnsville, you're going to have that same issue. You know, you guys have voiced your opinions about it not being needed and so on and so forth, but that's just, that's their program. So that would be their growth vehicle moving forward. You know, as far as the issues with the neighboring property owner, you know, the, been through lawsuits. I wasn't part of those. You've referenced, you know, the gentleman in my office who you did deal with on that stuff. And those are what they are, and that kind of stuff happens. And, you know, we get it. So we're just looking, moving forward and going, well, where do we go from here? We've had a tenant approach us, wanted to make an investment in your city. We are interested in finding out if it was something you're interested in. And so that's really where we're at. We've worked with staff to kind of make some modifications to the original plan that we were presented. And so we did some tweaks that kind of tried to align it with some of the guidelines in the zoning with Deb's recommendations. And I think she did a great job on laying it out. There's obviously a lot of moving parts here with the different issues at play. And like I said, you've all made your opinions very clear. So we'll take those for what they are and happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions, but Chipotle on 42 in, in the Target area during the pandemic, they also had areas where you just, you call, you pay online, you pull up, you go over and your meal was already there. Pandera is the same way and all of the others in the area. So I, you know, I understand all of the different restaurants are looking at, but I also understand this, in every different market, and I'm a member of ULI, so I read a lot of the things that come out of that and where, what different restaurants, fast foods are doing. But it's different in every market and they adjust and they adapt if they want to be in that market. So, but thank you for coming in. And you can even have Mr. Carabao listen to this meeting because it's streamed.
I'm sure he will. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Keely.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think you've mentioned Pandera, I think it's Panera, but Pandera, I believe, is a speed metal band, if I'm not mistaken.
Panera, that's right. It's Panera, okay.
Speed metal, you know.
So thank you for correcting me. Panera, in the, in the shopping center.
Panera.
Yeah.
I just have a question related to some of the concerns that were expressed. Does the owner of the land in a PUD with shared parking have any legal rights to tow other cars?
Mr. Jamnik.
Mayor and council, the shared parking agreement generally has someone charged with enforcing and overseeing the operations of the shared parking areas. So it depends on what's provided in the shared parking agreements or in the management agreement.
So their declaration.
HOA or the business organization that would do it.
Can we?
Answer depends on what the individual agreements are.
Well, we would know what they are, correct? Are they part of the PUD or is that something that is a private?
We have an litigation, so we can, we can look at it. But I'm sure Chase, if they're having their contract restored, would have the answer to that question.
Yeah. Because I think an HOA declaration will give us some good information and our staff has that because we had to go to litigation. And it was like three and a half years?
Something like that.
Yeah, three and a half years. Yes.
Well, there was no, yeah, there was no towing going on back then. Now there's towing going on. And I think that's just one of the many negative moves that HJ has taken against any, being a, a good, you know, player in the sandbox. They just don't want to play fair in the sandbox and play nice. And I, I have to question whether there was some legal standing for them to just decide to tow out of a shared parking lot with a, from a property that's part of that shared parking under the PUD.
Okay. Ms. Garros, I think you're clear with where the council stands right now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. And I think Mr. Mo also got that clear as well. Very good. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is experience Burnsville's report. And Ms. Burrell is sick this evening. And so, members of the council, I need a motion to continue this item.
Move to continue.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution establishing the 2022 property tax levy and adopting the 2022 budget and adopting the 2022, 2026 capital improvement program. And presenting this evening is Mr. Dan Tinter. Is that, am I pronouncing your name correctly, sir?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And he is our interim finance director. And welcome. And I hope you've experienced a welcoming time here in Burnsville since you took office.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yes, it has been a great kind of first month for the council's benefit. My name is Dan Tinter. I am a senior financial specialist with Ellers Companies. And since about November 1st, I've been serving as your interim finance director. So over the last few weeks, we've had the opportunity to finalize and prepare the proposed 2022 budget and property tax levy, which will be presented for your consideration this evening. the proposed 2022 budget and property tax levy which will be presented for your consideration this evening. So just by way of introduction for the presentation tonight, I'll touch a little bit on the budget themes and goals. We'll talk a little about the proposed 2022 budget in total. A little bit of discussion about the property tax levy. And of course, we'll close with some recommendations from staff regarding both the budget and the property tax levy. So just a reminder for the council, and much of this is captured in the budget document that was prepared and released to the council prior to the meeting this evening. The budget theme for 2022 is towards community and organizational health. And it's worth noting that this budget makes important investments in both the organization and the broader community. And it aligns existing resources with the vision, mission, and values of the Burnsville City Council. It's also worth noting that it is consistent with any past actions that have been taken by the council. These would include any plans, agreements, what have you, that were adopted. So all of that is ultimately baked into the proposed 2022 budget and presented for your consideration this evening. Additionally, the budget document includes a financial plan that also establishes some longer-term goals for the community based on guidance from the city council. And you can see in the graphic here, they include things like community visioning process, addressing staff needs, considering a priority or pragmatic-based budgeting, and of course, a two-year budget cycle. These are all items that the council has discussed in some way, shape, or form over your 2022 budget discussion. And they are also included in the financial plan. Some of these items are addressed in 2022, some of them are addressed in 2023, or some of the out-years. And some of them may even include an opportunity for additional discussion by the council in the future. By way of reminder, I always think it's nice to discuss the fact that the 2022 budget was not built in a vacuum. In fact, there have been at least seven different meetings of the city council over the 2022, excuse me, 2021 fiscal year, beginning back in June with review of some budget projections. And of course, in the 22nd, you had your audit presentation. Then you had some discussion about your max or proposed property tax. And then in September, you approved that. And then in early November, just a few weeks ago, you had a series of meetings as individuals with staff to discuss the budget. And then, of course, this evening, we're considering the property tax levy and the budget adoption. So the big reveal for proposed 2022 budget expenditures and uses are just over $113 million. As you can note here, about 37% of the overall budget will support employee services. You can think of this as wages and salaries, health insurance, and what have you. And then about 24% are current expenditures, or you can think of these materials, supplies, other services, and charges. And then bringing up in third place are 23% for capital improvements. The 2022 budget is about 13% more than the previous fiscal year, or about, as you can see from the math, about $13 million. Most of that increase is attributable to capital improvements. The Kelleher Trailhead building, several stormwater management projects, and 3.5 million on the Cliff Road interchange. That $113 million and change budget is supported by about $111 million in revenues and funding sources. This breakdown may look slightly different than what you've seen in the budget document. There are a few more categories. I collapsed a few of them here to make it a little easier to view in graphical form. But about 37% of the overall revenue sources are property taxes. And that's followed by about 29% from charges for service. Most of the charges for services are derived from the enterprise funds, mainly by way of the sale of utilities. The 2022 budget also includes the $2 million transfer in American Rescue Plan Act monies to fund eligible public services. So that is also reflected here in the gray that's listed as transfers. It's worth noting that the city received about $8.04 million in ARPA funds. And those monies will be apportioned over the next several fiscal years, $2 million per year to essentially relieve property tax pressure. And then there's a remaining $2 million that eventually will be appropriated by the council to meet other community needs. It's worth noting that there is a gap of about $2.425 million, and that will be filled by use of fund balance by the city. Of that $2.4 million, 1.2 of it will come from the general fund. And that is to support several of those strategic initiatives that were discussed on the previous slide. $286,000 for elections, $271,000 for police radios, $150,000 apiece for visioning activities and some inclusion and belonging programming. And then $80,000 for community engagement vehicle. And then there is another $85,000 budgeted for next year to support the ongoing effort to overhaul the Burnsville City Code. Ultimately, despite that use of fund balance, the city will still maintain and comply with its fund balance policies for next year. So it is a thoughtful and judicious use of fund balance to meet strategic priorities. Of those revenues, about $41 million comes from property taxes. As you can see here, a breakdown of the property tax levy by levy component. The largest increase of any of the individual levy components is the general fund of just over $1 million. And that's generally designed to respond to cost pressures that exist in employee services. There was about a 5% increase overall. And that is inclusive of things like the wage increase or changes in the compensation plan, changes in health insurance, what have you. But ultimately, the general fund levy responds to those cost pressures. Overall, as you can see, there's about a 4.8% increase in the property tax levy compared to the previous fiscal year. When considering a median valued home, which is about $292,000, that 4.8% translates to about $71.88 per year, about $5.99 per month. But ultimately, most of that increase is actually attributable to the change in the median value of the home. So for residential homestead, year over year, for taxes payable next year, the value of that home has gone up by about 5.8%. So the value of the home has increased greater than the increase in the property tax levy. So essentially, the rate remains about the same. So most of the increase is taxes that people may have to pay next year on a residential valued home. It's just actually attributable to their home becoming more valuable. As the council is aware, there are a few steps that the city of Burnsville goes through to adopt the budget. First, tonight at the city council meeting, you'll consider the property tax levy certification and then also the adoption of the budget. Then this meeting will be recessed briefly to then call the EDA to order, in which case then you'll consider the EDA property tax levy and adopt the EDA budget. That meeting will then be adjourned. The city council meeting will be called back to order. And then you'll be asked to take final action on the EDA property tax levy. It's worth noting that this process is a function of law. The EDA does have the legal right to levy a property tax, but then the council thereafter must consent to that property tax. So that is the virtue of the process that's on the slide here. So just to begin that kind of three-step process, based on everything that's happened to date, staff does recommend the council adopt the resolutions. There are two of them included in the agenda packet. The first is the 2022 property tax levy for the city, followed by the 2022 budget for the city. Staff does recommend that the property tax levy be adopted first. Without the property tax levy, we essentially cannot pass the rest of the budget. So there is a little bit of form and function here to the order of the actions considered by the council this evening. After that, what staff also recommends, once the EDA is called to order, that the EDA Board of Commissioners approve to the council the property tax for the EDA and also the budget for the EDA. And then, of course, assuming that does happen, the council will be called back to order and then asked to act on those actions. So thank you. I would be happy to stand for any questions that the council may have. But before throwing it open, I would just like to provide a special thanks to the city manager and the deputy city manager for their leadership throughout the proposed 22 budget process, the assistance and aid of the senior leadership team and providing their advice and insight. And then, of course, to the thoughtful and committed staff of the finance department who pore over every single number in comma and dollar sign to make sure that everything is just so. And we even have some of them in the audience here as backup in case I need it. Thank you very much.
Well, Mr. Tinter, thank you so much for a very well-presented budget story and levy. And you're correct, we have been working on this for a long time. So the numbers that you presented this evening is not new to us since we have been going over them for months. And so thank you for, for your presentation. Are there any questions for Mr. Tinter? Councilmember Gustafson.
Mr. Tinter, I just have a couple of questions real quick. In this budget that we're about to approve here, is there anything in the budget for any new staff hiring? Police, fire, any new employees, not, not replacement employees, new employees?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, at this point in time, from an FTE perspective, it's essentially a neutral budget. So there are no additional FTEs that are programmed for this year.
So if I look at the 5.8 or whatever, I think, because we have programmed over the next four years or whatever after doing this budget, is there anything for any new employees in that 5.8 per year?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, at this point in time, no. There are no additional FTEs programmed in any of the out-years of the financial plan. So the five, the four remaining years that are outlined in the budget document.
Okay. Second of all, on the ARPA money that we're using for, to keep the levy down, how much of that money is going to ongoing operations that we'll eventually be making up about year four out of this?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, at this point in time, the $2 million that's being appropriated annually, once the three years are up, the Burnsville City Council will, of course, have to make some decisions about how to backfill for that $2 million.
So we're going to be kicking this down the road. So three, four years from now, we're going to be looking at a pretty sizable increase.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm not necessarily sure that I would characterize it as kicking it down the road. I think right now you're using a judicious use of the resources that are available to you. And three years from now, you'll have to make similar decisions about what to do in that $2 million that are not available. The virtue of the financial plan is that you do have several years to consider those options moving forward.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Keely.
This question is for city manager Lee. In our previous budget discussions, there was a five-year plan laid out. And I believe it was 5.7 for the next four years after the 4.8 for 2022. And the question was asked, does that use up the $6 million out of the $8 million of ARPA? And is there any, in those final years, is there any ARPA money being used? Or is that 5.7 affected by the use of it, but basically no longer relying on any additional support to be 5.7? And I believe you said that is correct. Do you remember that conversation?
I'm not sure I'm following your question, council member.
To customer Gustafson's point, he's asked, do we have a cliff coming at the end of three years? That same kind of question was basically asked about the 5.7 forecast over the, over the next four years after next year. So the five-year plan to keep it at 5.7.
I'll ask interim direct finance director Dan to, to address how that plan was programmed out, if you don't mind.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, ultimately, yes, after that, those several years, the $2 million will no longer be available annually. And the council will have to consider adjustments to the property tax levy or alternative funding strategies, or perhaps reduction in expenditures to make up the difference. As far as the 5.7 is concerned, it is my understanding that essentially there may have to be adjustments upward if the council was interested in going that direction. Of course, it's the council's prerogative to decide if the, if increasing the property tax levy is the appropriate solution to that particular public policy question.
Sort of answer the question, there is a cliff coming.
Yes.
Yep.
I think we need to understand what that is.
And I think.
Because that's not how it was presented in previous budget discussions and follow-up questions.
And I think that's going to be difficult and, and a tough discussion that we're going to have next year when we look at a two-year budget. Correct, Mr. Tinter? When we're going to look down the road and say we're going to have a two-year budget and we're going to look at the resources. And that's why one of the things that I keep asking is a staffing plan so we can look at all of these items that we need to address. So how are we going to do that? And 2022, when we start looking at 2023 and 2024 budget, I think that's when we're going to have to really have some difficult work and some very courageous work that we have to do with regard to meeting the needs of the people and also looking at our staffing. So it's going to be. Councilmember Schultz.
Looking at our budget along with the levy and seeing that our, our budget is 13% higher this year than last year and looking at future budgets, although they have not yet been proposed, but we're looking at additional 5.7 levy increases in those years. And, and the conversation that is, that is coming up now, that that does not, that, first of all, we have that cliff that's going to drop off. And second of all, council, councilmember Gustafson is pointing out that there has already been discussions of additional full-time employees being needed. And so that's also not in those projections. So what we have is we have one-time money use, use of ARPA, which will fall off. So, okay, so 5.7, right, next few years. And we have a cliff and we're looking at adding additional staff. And we have, we have some more capital expenditures that are coming up as well. So when we, we look at this, and I, and I know that these projections are, you know, they're, they're not set in stone. They're, they're a best guess. But they aren't, they aren't a best guess. Because we know that those things are coming and we know that those pressures are there. And we already know that we're heading in a certain direction. So when we represent to our residents that we're looking at a certain levy increase this year and we're looking at 5.7 in the next few years and that type of thing, that's not an honest representation. We are raising the levy this year and we're going to have significant levy increase proposals coming up. So I think that needs to be more clearly called out so our residents can give us feedback on, is that really what you want?
Okay. Councilmember Workman.
Thank you. I'll be, I'll be brief. I haven't been doing this as long as all of you, but one thing I've picked up over the last four years is that nothing really moves in a straight line when it comes to budget. Things ebb and flow pretty naturally. Just before I got here this evening, was told we had a $600,000 surplus in just permitting alone this year, which was not anticipated last year because of the amount of development that's continued to happen in Burnsville. So understanding that these are pressures that we're going to have to face, I don't plan on losing sleep tonight because of it. We've made decisions on the fly, this council has, that has cost money. And we've made decisions that has, you know, reduced the budget. And I'm confident with our staff and city manager that we're going to work through this over the next two to four years and come to a solution that isn't going to be drastic and hopefully not based on emotions, but based on facts and data that is presented to us.
Yeah. And there is a plan for us to move forward with all of this then. And if you have been looking at your emails, there are some budget discussions that's already on our calendar. Correct, city manager Lee?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Because I've been seeing them all come through today. So.
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Members of the council, if you have no other questions for Mr. Tinter or deputy city manager Lindberg or city manager Lee, I would like to entertain a motion to, first of all, approve the levy.
I would motion to approve the levy as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
And the motion passes. The next item is the budget, adoption of the budget. May I have a motion to adopt the budget, please?
Motion to adopt the budget as presented.
There is a motion.
Second.
And there's a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
And there are two nays on the budget. So, Mr. Tinter, and I also believe that we have to adopt the capital improvement plan.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you can certainly make a motion to adopt the capital improvement plan. The resolution for the budget includes the budget authority for the capital improvement plan.
Yeah. So I know it's in there, but the following budget items were in our background. Trying to follow along. So I know it's in the budget, but the staff want it separate as well? No? Because it's already in the resolution.
It's already in the document.
Yeah. It's already in the resolution.
Yep.
Okay. Next year, don't put that line item in there. Okay? Thank you. Okay, and now I will recess the Burnsville City Council meeting, so the Economic Development Authority meeting can convene.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will call the Economic Development Authority meeting to order. Please note for the record, all commissioners are present. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll move on. Number two is our consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Keely.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and the motion carries. Item three is a resolution adopting the EDA 2001 levy and budget. Interim finance director Dan Tinter is presenting again.
Thank you. President.
Are you done?
Yeah.
No new information.
So just, just by way of summary, the proposed 2022 budget for the EDA would authorize up to $708,105 of expenditures, which is about a $4,700 or about a 1% increase from the previous fiscal year. And then additionally, the budget assumes a property tax levy of about $297,500. That would be an increase of about $50,000 compared to the previous year. It's worth noting that the trajectory of this particular property tax levy is consistent with a multi-year plan of the EDA to find more funds for economic development-related activities, and then, of course, to maintain the EDA's fund balances as appropriate.
Okay, are there any questions or discussions? Well, I will just add that I will be voting for the EDA levy, even though I voted against the tax levy, because our EDA is underfunded and it needs these funds.
So I thought you, you voted for the levy, you voted against the budget.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
There you go. That's it. Never mind. We'll remind you if you. Yeah, you can remind me when I get it wrong. It's the medication, Dan.
Not for long.
What's that?
Okay.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution adopting the 2021 EDA levy and budget?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Workman, second by Commissioner Keely. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and there's no other business. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Wait a minute. Oh, you didn't say oppose.
Oh, oppose, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It was unanimous, so.
No.
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 Wasn't it?
No.
I forgot to give you your nobility.
And, and, does the clerk have the?
The clerk have the division of the house? Okay, good. All right, now, now may I have a motion to adjourn?
Well, I'll motion for that.
Commissioner Schultz motions. Second by Commissioner Keely. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We adjourn, back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I will now reconvene the Burnsville City Council meeting, and members of the council, we need to adopt the resolution by the EDA, and it's our job to ratify it.
Motion to approve the resolution adopting the Burnsville Economic Development Authority 2022 property tax levy.
Second.
And budget.
And budget, sorry.
Yeah.
Second.
It just says levy in the title.
Okay. Councilmember Workman second.
Councilmember Workman already did.
Those are you.
Okay.
Good one.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay.
Nay.
And the clerk has the division of the house. Thank you, everyone. There are no other items to come before the council this evening. Thank you, Mr. Tinter, for your service and for presenting the budget and levy this evening. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. Good night, and thank you for being with us.